Okay, guys. The 10th and 30th Republican Senate Board Work Session is on the way. No call please.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Vandal.
Okay. We'd like to congratulate Rick Garing and Whitney Lanning for winning the election on Tuesday night. They'll be sworn in on the 17th, and thanks for joining us. Items under discussion. One, annual progress report. And that's going to be, I believe, Kendall out.
Yes. Okay, well, we'll jump right in. And you should find some handouts at your station. So there is an actual, there's this that shows that, a couple of slides per page of what we're going to be seeing up at the screen, so you can take notes or ask question, or, you know, write your questions or what have you. But you'll be able to see that maybe potentially a little better. And then you should also have a copy of the actual report at your station. Mine's in black and white, but yours is likely in color. And so just to make sure you have those kind of things. And then I'll be handing out, at a certain juncture during our time together today, a sample calculation of something that we're going to be looking at. But other than that, you should have everything that you need. So those will be the two big pieces that you can kind of refer to. Also, I would point out, I did bring a copy, about three copies. I have one, there's a couple at the tables, and then I'll pass this on down. But essentially, this is the Missouri School Improvement Program Guideline, the handbook, so to speak. And it is, as you know, we're in MSEP-6, or the sixth iteration of the Missouri School Improvement Program. And so it lines out in far greater detail than we will get into today about the reports and all those things and the calculations. So just wanted you to be aware of that. And if you would pass that down, maybe Ken might want to take a gander at it at some point. So we'll just go ahead and get started. And what I would say, in terms of questions, of course, ask, please ask clarifying questions as we go through the report today. Like, if you don't understand something that we're going over, like, you know, a word or the context or anything like that. And then we will save time for questions at the end, too, that maybe are more generalized or broader to the, what's next, and how we're going to continue with this report and how we use it. So, so please, just stop me if something is unclear. So really, when we, what are we really doing here today? What we're really doing is we're looking at a pilot report. And you guys know, we'll go back through the journey. We started this journey together last June, talking about MSEP-6 and what that was going to look like for our school district. So this is a pilot report that they developed over last year's data. So the school year was 21, 22. And so this is, this is helpful to districts in that, okay, now we know what this report's going to look like, because no one's ever seen this type of report before, because this is the sixth iteration of the Missouri School Improvement Program. So it just helps districts better understand, okay, so for the 22, 23 school year, which is where we are now, what is the report going to look like? Because at that point, it's no longer a pilot report, right? It's no longer a dress rehearsal. And so that is why this is an important point, report for us, just to understand, and that's really all we're talking about today, from at least my lens, is just understanding the report, because my guess is, this is the type of report that we'll be getting for, you know, the foreseeable, foreseeable future until the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education decides to go into the next iteration of the Missouri School Improvement Program. So that's really what we're talking about today. And so in light of that, I just am going to step through a quick review, just to jog your memory just a little bit. And again, as I pointed out, we started this, you can look at the date on this particular slide, this was June 8th of 2022. And this is when we first began to have the discussion, and it might have been actually in this, this very room, about the MSEP-6 program and what that entails. And we looked at the importance of it, what are the key changes? And I'm just going to click through this. We looked at the history of MSEP-6. We talked about what the key components were in terms of continuous improvement, what the state aims in terms of promoting practices that lead to healthy schools. All of this is part and parcel to the MSEP-6 information that the districts across the state were learning this year, so that the 2023 school year, this year, we will be held accountable to this report, while this is simply a pilot report. So these are the six strands, if you recall, of MSEP-6. Had to do with alignment of standards, curriculum and assessment, leadership, effective teaching and learning, collaboration, climate and culture, database decision-making, equity and access, all of which we addressed in our St. Joseph's School District Continuous Improvement Plan. And then we talked about, what are the three main categories of what's coming down through this new lens? We talked about student performance, continuous improvement, and best practices. And then, as far back as June, we talked about, what's this report going to have? What can we anticipate for the pilot report, and what would that look like? So we talked about student performance. That would include proficiency and growth. That would include success-ready student index. And it would also include a continuous improvement component. And then we went through all of it. And so that's just a quick reminder of where we were in June. And so going back to the report from today, that just kind of gets us, gives us some context of also what we're looking at, and what the St. Joe School District has done to better prepare, not only to review the report, but to be better positioned going into the 23 report, so that we make sure that we, you know, are able to close some gaps that we potentially saw in this report. And so, for example, even, we did a quick update to you guys in July. And I think this actual meeting was at TMC. And just gave you an update as to, you know, what are we doing? August 1st, this is what we're doing. August 2nd, December 15th, this is what we're going to be doing. January 5th to February. And then, and then really, we went through that one-year timeline of what was going to happen leading up to this pilot report, and ultimately, to the report that will come from this year's data, that will lead to more accountability for the St. Joe School District. And so that's, again, just a reminder of the things that we were going to accomplish and, and did, as we led up to this particular report and looking at the new standards within MSEP-6. So again, we looked at metrics and monitoring and all of those different components. And, you know, like the slide said, every, in a lot of our daily practices, we have been really looking at, how do we continue to improve with regard to what's coming under MSEP-6? And so if you look just to, to the side of that link that says July 2022, you can see that we then had the MSEP-6 committee meetings. And so we lined out, this is what we're going to be looking at, as we lead up to better understanding this and make this very visible for the Board of Education and certainly the community and staff members. And we have done those things. So really, this brings us back to the pilot report. And so just from a high level, before we kind of try to figure out what some of those metrics mean and some of the things on that report mean, from a high level, the accreditation status requirement, according to DESI, is 70% on the report. So the St. Joseph's School District achieved 67.6% on its pilot report. So that is very close to that 70% mark. In fact, it means that the St. Joe School District achieved 97% of the requirements for what has been dubbed by DESI, not necessarily the St. Joe School District, as a dress rehearsal report. The Year One District Selection Status of Continuous Improvement Plan, those of you all know that we were chosen, and it was a randomized selection. There was no intent or criteria to be selected for a Year One Continuous Improvement Plan submission. We did that, and we submitted that plan in December of 2022, and the St. Joseph's School District earned 100% of the points possible for its Continuous Improvement Plan. And again, that was, that plan was reviewed by a Northwest Consortium, and then it was reviewed by a team at, at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And just as, as some more highlights to the report, 20% of the districts across Missouri were just under that 70% accreditation requirement. And 25% of the districts in the Northwest region, region were just under that 70% requirement. So we were in good company. And, and just to point out some other, you know, facts, is that there were four districts across the state of Missouri, and that's 554 school districts, that, that actually were anywhere above that 90% mark. So that's .2, .72% of the districts across the state that were in that, in that particular range. So just to point out and give that, give you some context there. And in addition to that, in the Northwest region, there were zero school districts that were in that range. So going on with providing context, it's always important for us to not look at data as a sole point, or use some, you know, some of our notions that we earned, learned in grade school or high school, that, you know, 90% is this, and 70% means this, and it doesn't take more than a high school student to understand that. Really, what you have to do is better understand what it is that we're looking at in the context of our comparison set. So for example, you can see by this comparison set that the St. Joe School District was in a range with its comparison set, and we even added Liberty in, which is not in our competitive comparison set, because they have 19% free and reduced lunch, where the St. Joe School District, according to 2022 data, has, you know, 70% free and reduced lunch. And that, those are just different challenges and different situations that school districts face. And so really, when you look at that particular data, what that does is help us better understand where we are competitively with our comparison set and what's our next play. Well, our next play is going to be to get to 70%, and we're, you know, within five or six points from, from doing that for the 2023 school year. And so now we're going to kind of dive a little bit more into the report, and we're not going to get terribly deep into it. But it is important to understand it, because it is going to be kind of that goalpost that we have to understand from year to year to year, and to under, and also understand that that's where the organization is going to be aiming, resources and our efforts, so that we can continue to, to be competitive with regard to this point, or this particular report. So really, what it, what it boils down to is that the APR, as we've talked about ever since June, is it really has to do with an assessment scores. So what do the kids get on the statewide assessments that we are getting ready to take in May? And we really are looking at English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. The other thing that the report looks at is college and career readiness. So in other words, what are the key things that students need to be, need to be ready for success after high school? So what are those things that DESI says that we need to be monitoring with regard to that? Graduation rate. Are the St. Joe School District students graduating either after four years or, or supported in doing so down the road? DESI allows for us to have a four-year rate, a five-year rate, a six-year rate, a seven-year rate. And so those are things that, again, that they look at as a metric of college and career readiness. And then there's also graduation follow-up. So where do the kids go after they leave us? What are they doing? And so are they gainfully employed upon graduation? Are they actively working in a skilled field? Or are they training for a future career by going to a two- or a four-year institution? So the, or actually going to the military is another particular field that DESI considers college and career readiness. So when you really start to look at the report itself, we'll just kind of unpack it just briefly, but really what you're looking at, if you look at that green line, you're looking at performance. Again, this is student performance. This is the, this is the part of the report that looks at student performance. There's another part of the report that looks at continuous improvement. So you'll see that you just go right down the list. It says English Language Arts, it says Math, it says Science, it says Social Studies. And then it goes back to English Language Arts and Mathematics, and we'll talk about what that means. But you'll notice in the column just next to that, it says all students in student group. Okay? So we'll be talking about what does that mean? Because that's important for you to better understand, who are the all students and who are the students in the student group? So it also talks about the points possible and the points that the St. Joe School District earned. Then it gives a percentage right there. And then in addition, there is this, this thing that says MPI. And so the question is, well, what's that? And so we'll, we'll briefly go over that, so that you understand a little more how DESI is looking at, at data. And then really, it gives you a designation. So DESI has four types of designations, and we'll go over that and, and what, what triggers that particular type of designation to be assigned to the St. Joe School District in those particular categories. So the first thing I wanted to talk about just quickly is, what is a student group on this pilot report? So you get, this is the definition that comes straight out of that big packet or handbook that, that a few of you have access to. But really, what it is looking for, it says, these are the, these are the groups, the low-income students, and that's defined by the students who are directly certified in the National School Lunch Program, students with disabilities, English learners, and the state's major racial and ethnic student groups. So after DESI reviewed its data, it's five groups who tend to perform significantly lower than the state average. And this is DESI's, according to DESI's data, that would be Black students, Hispanic, the direct certified students. Those were formerly known as free and reduced lunch. Now that's known as DC. And also students with disabilities, which DESI has, is calling SWD, and EL, EL students. So that's who is in the student group. So when you see that category, henceforth on your particular report, that's who DESI is talking about in that particular case. So the next question I wanted to briefly go over is, the thing that causes us to get a designation that we get over there on the very last column, is a function of what we call the MPI. I would, I would venture to guess that most of you are used to hearing student performance reported in terms of percent advanced and proficient. And I would, I'm looking around the room, everyone seems to be familiar with percent advanced and proficient. Well, the issue with that is, and that came from many iterations of federal guidelines from the, the Education Department, about not leaving children behind, if you recall that at all. But we really were looking at, the school districts were tracked by just looking at the percent of students that were advanced and proficient. But everyone forgot about the students that were basic and below basic. And, and so really, what we are now looking at is at all four levels. When you think through the lens of an MPI, what that really is saying is that's a MAP Performance Index. So there's more than just advanced and proficient, as I just mentioned, there's basic and below basic. And so by, the, the MAP Performance Index takes into account all of those. And so I do have a sample calculation. There will be a quiz afterwards, I'm just kidding. But there's no algebra, well, there's a little algebra involved. And then if you guys would just pass these around, I'll just kind of, yeah. So, and this is super duper easy, so don't have any math anxiety. So basically, all DESI is really doing is having a more equitable approach to looking at student performance. So as I just mentioned, there are four different levels. There's advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. What DESI does is they assign point values to each of those categories. So advanced, DESI says, that is five points. Proficient, that is four points. Basic is three points, and below basic is one point. Then what DESI does is they assign those point values to each student. So for a pretend calculation, because we all know, we start with the easy, easiest examples possible when trying to learn a new math lesson, we're going to use 100 kids. And so, for example, if we have 100 kids, and we have 25 of them are advanced, and 25 of them are proficient, 25 of them are basic, and 25 of them are below basic, what DESI then does is assign point values to those kids. So you'd have 25 times 5 is 125, we're at the very bottom. And then 25 times 4 is 100, 25 times 3 is 75, and 25 times 1 is 25. And so then you add up all those points. I used 100 because it, it lessens the next level of gymnastics that we might have to do if we didn't use 100. And so the MPI equals 325. So if you, if you take that notion and you look back at your report under the MPI column, you can kind of see that it's, that our MPIs are, they range anywhere from the, the high 300s to the mid 300s. And so what that means is, we have a mixture of students in each of those categories. But you can tell from the point structure, what, what is the lowest point value you can get on this, on this whole system? The below basic kids, right? They're one point. If you look at the next jump, what's the point value? It, it's three. So we, we are incentivized by that point structure to make sure that kids are not below basic. And that was DESI's intent through that point structure. Any questions on that? I'll just pause briefly. But it's just really, it helps you kind of understand where in the world these MPIs are coming from. Okay, good. And it is a little bit more complex to that, than that. I will say that there's about three pages of that, but nonetheless, this is a good approach to just kind of getting a handle on it. So the, these levels you see right here, you can see the red arrows that point to approaching, those are the levels that you see most often on our report. Okay? So that means that for DESI's structure, there's four different types of levels you can be on. There is target, there is on track, there is approaching, and then there is floor. No one wants to be on the floor. That's probably why they mentioned that. But the approaching is a good mix of advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. On track, you're going to probably have more kids in the proficient. And then you can tell by target, it's a 400 or a 500, that means all of your kids are either advanced or proficient. And so that's why the ultimate MPI would be a 500, because that would mean every single one of your kids were, were advanced, whereas 400 would be anywhere in between. So you'd have no kids below basic or basic. So I'm, I'm not where, sure where that school district is, but. So that's really how this is all framed out. And this just gives you a good idea of what the cut scores are, so it just makes better sense. And then you can see that they have a different, a little bit different range for the student groups. So you can take a look at that as well. So, and then what they do after all of that, then they assign point values. So that's where the points are coming from. So once they figure out your MPI, then they figure out what level you are, and if you're in that particular category, you get X amount of points. So for approaching, and I've got a little red arrow up there, if you're in approaching in ELA, Math, Science, or Social Studies, you get about half the possible points. And so, and the same is true with the student groups. So if we look at our report, really what we have for English Language Arts, and that's grades three through eight and English 2, so that includes the high schools, because the high schools are taking end-of-course exams, our MPI was 373. And so our goal for future years would be to be at 381, because that would get us out of approaching and into on-track. So that's how we can gauge this. And then our designation, as you can see on the report, was approaching. And so we got six out of the 12 points. Now, we're going to shift gears real quick, and I know this is a lot of information. You guys are doing pretty good, or, or I just don't know that you're not doing well. So we're going to talk about student growth, because proficiency is one thing. It's like, the student takes the test in May, and you get the report, the parents get the report at home, and it says that student is proficient. Okay. But the question is, how is the student doing from their third grade year to their fourth grade year to their fifth grade year to their sixth grade year to their seventh grade year to their eighth grade year? And so that's a different kind of measurement, and that's called growth. And so whereas your proficiency, it's just one shot to get, you know, it's that day you took the test, and maybe you had the flu, or it was coming on and you didn't feel well. But year over year, what does that really look like for that student? And so that's called growth. And the growth model for Missouri, essentially, after a lot of review, is really a ranking of, and this again, is an oversimplification, please hear me say that, but it's a way to understand it. It is really a ranking of school districts across the state. Because what it ends up doing, what, what the, the growth model does is it looks at how kids are growing across the state, and essentially kind of puts it in order and figures out where the middle is, where the top is, and where the bottom is. And so if you're anywhere in the middle or the top, that's good. If you're below that, then that would, would appear that there's more work to be done, because that's a reflection of instruction. Because growing kids from below basic to basic, to proficient, to advanced, is a lot of work to occur in one year. And so that's a lot of growth. And so that's really what we're looking at in that particular realm, year over year, that that student sustains that kind of growth. And so for the St. Joe School District, when we really looked at, and for whatever reason, the raw data had 550 school districts in the ELA file, we'll talk about what it was in a different file. But if you look at our comparison set, one of the highest was Kansas City Public at 454. And then you look at Joplin, Jefferson City, Springfield, St. Joseph, we're all right there in a pack. And you can see, we included Liberty again, we're, you know, a little bit behind them, a little bit behind Columbia, and we far outpaced Independence, who is the most like the St. Joe School District, if you really wanted to take a fingerprint and look at another very close comparison. Kansas City Public and, was kind of a, is, that growth is, is significant. So I would also say that this is a reflection of, it's a one, one year's worth of data. And so when you look at growth, you're looking at year over year over year over year. And I would say that you might recall during the pandemic, we were required to have 85% of our students test in the spring of 2021. The spring of 2020, nobody tested, right? Because we were in closure. So because so many students were not coming to school, they were virtual, all of those things, we, we worked very hard to get at least 85. In fact, we, we superseded that mark and had more than 85 students test during that time. But a lot of the school districts- But a lot of the school districts that were completely shut down didn't meet that 85% mark. So their students are going to show a lot of growth. Kansas City Public was one of them, St. Louis was one of them. And so that's another, probably what you would consider potentially an anomaly as we look at this data, whereas our students have steadily, through the pandemic, we've had them test and taken a pulse so that we can plan as we go forward. So I just wanted to point that out, that not everybody met that 85% threshold during a very difficult time. Then if you look at the student groups, again, we're kind of in the same pack, not substantially different. And then I'm going to move on to the math portion. This, again, we're going to go back to looking at the MPI. The MPI for math, and please keep in mind, that is grades 3 through 8, Algebra I and Algebra II. So it's everyone altogether. Our MPI was 348.2. The goal would be to get to that 369.9, because that moves us out of approaching into on-track, and those are difficult numbers to move. And then we got six out of the 12 points. And again, we were at 237 in terms of math, in terms of our ranking. Now, this file says there's 523 school districts, so some of the school districts were not able to produce score pairs so that they could look year over year, so the number was reduced. And so you can see kind of where we track. We are a little bit lower than we were in ELA, but again, Independence, we outpaced them. We're very close to Columbia, far exceeded Jefferson City. And I even threw Park Hill in this one, because they were very similar to Kansas City Public. And I'm sure Park Hill did do the 85% testing that I mentioned in the last slide. And Liberty was 119. So student growth really is a function of how much those kids are growing. So this is what is different about this report. In past reports, proficiency was given all the points, and growth had less points. Now they've equalized them. So some of the schools that have had students walking in the door, advanced and proficient, are not happy at times with the fact that now they're monitoring growth as well. So that is something that we will keep our eye on in continuing to get those growth And this is your student groups. So again, we already defined what a student group is, but this is different than all of our kids. This is the students that Desi considers in the student group. Our MPI was 318. Our goal would be to get to a 335. We were designated as approaching, and that was three out of six points. If you look at our growth, again, equalized in terms of points, we were at a 260. So we outpaced Joplin, we outpaced Columbia, we were right there with, you know, North Kansas City. And again, we outpaced Independence in that particular metric. So again, just to point out that there's a difference between growth and proficiency, but growth is now just as heavy duty on this report as proficiency was in past reports. Okay, so then we're going to move on to science. So science is monitored by districts in grade 5, 8, and then there is a biology end-of-course exam. Now, you'll notice that there is not, I don't have the growth charts in the, under science, and that's because it's kind of a one-shot, grade 5, grade 8, biology. So there's no iteration from year to year to year like there is for math and ELA. So that's why there is no growth model here. So for science, we were at a 348. Our goal would be to get to that 372. We were designated as approaching, and that was two out of four points. For student groups, we were at a 223. The goal would be to get a little bit higher at that, would be 344. And again, the point value with approaching was one out of two points. So you can see they don't allot as many points to science as they do to ELA and math. ELA and math own the lion's share of points on this particular report. And then moving on to social studies, the way districts monitor social studies is the government end-of-course exam. And so for all of our students, we were at a 381. That's pretty close to that 400, so that would be our goal. That would mean our students all were proficient. 2022 designation was on-track, so that gave us three out of four points. And for the student groups, the MPI was 354. The goal then would be 379, to get us into a different designation, which would actually be target. And in this particular instance, we got 1.5 out of two points on that particular portion of the report. Okay, so now we're going to wander into, away from just looking at content areas. So we've covered ELA, we've covered math, we've covered science, we've covered social studies, and hopefully the report's starting to make a little sense, same song, second verse, with these different designations and metrics. But now what we're going to be looking at is what Desi calls success-ready performance. And what that has to do with is how are kids ready and prepared for college and career? And so that's really what we're looking at here. You'll see the word CCR several times. All that means is college and career readiness. And then you'll also see something that says advanced coursework. What that means is things like advanced placement, dual credit, or dual enrollment. So that's really what Desi is talking about there. And so moving on from that, when we look at the data and look at our comparative set, when we look at CCR percents of graduate, that is really looking at our seniors and how many of them have taken a post-secondary readiness test that helps them make the next steps in their life. So did they take the ACT? Did they take the Work Keys exam? Did they take an ASVAB? Those are the types of exams that help kids figure out what, where do I go from here? And so it's not only to make sure that all of our seniors took a test, but how did they score on it? So for example, with the ACT, if kids are scoring 17 and below, then we only get .25 points. And then if kids are scoring between 18 and a 21 on the ACT, we get a half a point. So you can see the point structure changes as the kids perform better on the assessments. The same is true of the Work Keys, the same is true of the ASVAB. So really, it's not just making sure that all of your kids take a test. It's, okay, A, do that, but then also make sure they're performing better on those exams, because that would ensure that they are more prepared for their next step. And so when you look at our CC percent of graduate, we were at 53.8. So again, you look at that, I mean, from a comparability standpoint, that outpaces Kansas City Public, it's similar to North Kansas City, under, just under that 59%. You know, Joplin was at 53%. So again, you can see that there is work to be done, but we are with our comparison set, we're above some, we're right in the pack with some, and then there's others that are outpacing us. And then, then when you think about advanced credit, again, advanced credit is the students, the way that this is monitored is looking at our seniors and their course participation in advanced credits and dual enrollment and dual credit. And so for example, if students are enrolled in advanced placement, research tells us that they are more likely to be prepared for that next step, whatever that might be. If that's the workforce, or if that is going to a two- or four-year institution, they are more likely, just based on the lens of we all need to be able to critically think, and that's something that AP courses are likely to induce in terms of their curriculum strategies. So that's really what they're looking at, is how are those kids, what are their, what are their scores on the AP exam? So you've got to score a three or above to get credit for this particular metric, or you get to, or if you get to be in the class. And so that is really the way that they're looking at this particular metric. And so again, it's really looking at how are the St. Joe School District's students, what is their course-taking patterns, and what are the results of them, you know, being enrolled in those classes and taking those classes? So you can see that right now we're at 40.7 there, Joplin 40.4, Raytown 33, Kansas City Public 46, Park Hill 94%. I put that in there just so that you can see the different types of ways that this metric plays out in different types of school districts. North Kansas City 61.4, Liberty 71.7, Independence 60.9. So in Springfield, 35.4. So it's just, it gives us some visibility into what are the things that we need to be doing and working on. So in terms of those point levels, really, we're, you know, pointing, you know, we already kind of talked through those and what those look like, and most of those designation, we were in approaching. Now we're going to talk about graduation rate. So if you look on the report, the St. Joe School District was given credit for its seven-year cohort, so it received 15 out of the 20 possible points. But I did pull the four-year graduation rate, because if you don't have a strong four-year graduation rate, the likelihood of picking up a whole lot of steam afterwards isn't as great. So we do and will continue to focus on that four-year graduation rate. Now, I will say that graduation rates across the state, and even the state's composite average graduation rate was suppressed after coming through the pandemic. But you can see where we are with regard to other school districts. And so at 77.6, for example, Joplin was at 81, but a lot of the school districts are closer in that 90% range. So that would indicate that we have some work to do there. And I don't think that's a surprise to any of you that have been in the MSIP6 committee meetings or the board updates that we do on our balanced scorecard, has been pretty clear that that is a metric that is lagging. So, but it also helps to put this in context and to see how other school districts are performing. And so our goal would be to get to 80, okay? So we're at 77.6. The next move on the playboard would be, we want to get to 80, because that'll get us out of approaching and on-track, and then to continue to gain steam from there. Okay, and then lastly, in terms of the performance side of this report, the front page of this report, what we're talking about is graduation follow-up. So again, this is 2022, this is last year's numbers. But what is this? This is what I talked about a little bit earlier. This is what happens to the kids when they leave us. Do they go into unemployment? Do they go into employment where they were trained in the St. Joe School District to get into? Do they go to a two-year institution? Do they go to the, a four-year institution? Or do they go to the military? So this is a follow-up that we do. And so in this particular instance, we were at 86.7% in terms of our graduation follow-up. So again, you can kind of see this in the context of other school districts. And so, you know, there's just a variety of school districts that are in a similar spot to us, from Liberty to Columbia to Springfield to St. Joe, and then, you know, the rest of them are kind of creeping into that 90, with Kansas City Public at about 77.3. So again, this is really a metric as to what is happening after they leave us, which is really important. And so that's how we monitor this. Okay. So I would pause real quickly to see how you guys are doing and take your temperature. Yes, sir?
So just to back up a second, so the career-ready aspect of it, how, after these students take the tests, how well do we follow up with the students and direct them toward the right career path? What are we doing in that regard, I guess?
Does anybody want to speak to that? Or are you guys good with me?
Either way.
Okay. Well, I mean, the kids that, I mean, it's really through the counseling department, and so they follow up with them. They have a plan that gets generated in the 8th grade, we'll talk about that in a little bit, and then a plan that is also generated when they are freshmen, and how that goes throughout their high school path, and how the counselors manage them and help them through that lens. And so, and I know Elizabeth's here, I don't know, is that from a high level?
I'll speak too. I think a lot of our parents believe that their kids should go to college. And so then they'll take the ACT, maybe their sophomore, junior year, and they come out with a score that's not so good, 14, 15. Our counselors do an excellent job of getting back with those kids, talking to those parents, and then maybe looking at career paths that would be reasonable or more likely in the future. A lot of times then, they will have them take the Work Keys, which is more geared towards the workforce, and it also gives them some insight on career paths. And then the ASVAB's another option too, that gives them that.
So the Work Keys is only taken with, perhaps they give it to you as well?
No, I mean, we have a lot of kids who want to move that route. They know that they want to go into welding, so they want to take the Work Keys. So our counselors do an excellent job of following up with their kids. And then our high schools also do ACT academies, so if we have a kid who's got a 20 on the ACT and really needs to improve in certain areas, we'll do, it's kind of like a crash course in all of those areas that they're tested in, to really try to get them improving on testing strategies and then also content.
Gotcha.
So that happens at all three high schools.
And you mentioned that the path begins in the 8th grade. How does that look like? I mean, because I mean, I know 8th graders, and they barely are interested in having a shower most days.
No, it's fine. They take the Career Connections.
I have a middle school there, so.
Yeah, they do take.
The conversation is started.
Yes. And a lot of our middle schools have career speakers come in to try and expose them to different opportunities. But they take a Career Connections inventory, isn't that what it's called?
Mystery Connections.
Which kind of guides them towards a field, a career field, and then they just kind of start those conversations with counselors at that point.
So what percentage, you may not know this, but off the top of your head, if you could guess, what percentage of the students who take these career-ready tests take the Work Keys and some of the more trade-oriented tests?
I would say not enough. And most of the, most of the kids at Central are probably going to be geared towards ACT, because the majority of their kids go to college. And then kids from Central or from Benton and Lafayette primarily go into the workforce. So those are your kids that we want to be taking ASVAB and the Work Keys.
Yeah. Would you say they're pretty well encouraged to take that? Would you say they're pretty well encouraged to take that test?
Yes, we encourage all high school students between their freshman year, depending on the test, ACT is typically more junior and senior year, ASVAB you could take a little earlier, Work Keys is also more for upperclassmen. We encourage all of our high school students to take at least one, if not more, all three, because we have few, but some will take all three of one of those types of tests.
Thank you.
That goes back to that perception, I think, from parents that they really want their kids to go to college, when there is another path that may be more fitting for their interests, and they can be successful. So it's our job to guide these folks and really have those conversations with parents, but sometimes it can be a tough conversation. But sometimes it can be a tough conversation.
So Central is about sixty percent, a little under, going to two or four-year. And Lafayette, around like thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent going to two or four-year.
What was the first number you said?
Central is about around sixty percent are going to two or four-year college.
Okay.
The majority of their kids.
Gotcha.
Kendra, does that APR and CCR include the end of course exams at Hilliard? Cause I know they do industry certification. And I believe they test a hundred percent of their students.
Yes, yes, they, you include the CTEs and IRCs as well. Those are just not as broadly known.
Yeah.
But it's nice to know we're starting before high school.
Really good results. Their pass rates are incredible. So why don't you make sure we're including them?
Yeah, it's a really good conversation to have because from what I see, we're doing really good, surpassing Independence, which is very close to our district when it comes to English, English and language arts and math. But for some reason, they're exceeding in the success-ready students in graduation rate.
We've noticed that. And attendance as well.
Right. We've been problem-solving that. That's what we've been working pretty closely with. And it's, they have some strategies that we're not doing. And I've talked to Dr. Edgar about this. I think there's just been a philosophy, um, shift in leadership. And so I would like us to be on the same page as the other school districts. It seems like we're kind of leaving some, some points on the table, as Kendra says, when we should just be implementing some strategies that other school districts are doing.
It's like they're really low compared to us, what they're graduating from.
I found that very counterintuitive.
Makes sense, doesn't it?
Right.
Very count, yeah, very counterintuitive.
And I think anything's like what? Um, like for example, if we have a kid. Pacific Islander kiddo comes around junior year, they've been out of the country. It's our job to create a modified graduation plan for that kid. Ethnicity, ethnicity aside, even if we have a kid who's been off the radar and comes to us fifteen, sixteen years old and that they don't have the credits, then we need to do a modified graduation plan. And we haven't done a whole lot of those in the past, so that's just one example.
They do over there.
Yes. Uh, our attendance policy is another thing that's kind of hurt us. And I know there's some mixed feelings on the board with that. Um, but when we go over eight days, kids do not get credit or they're at jeopardy of not getting credit. Independence has kids make up time. So they do a Saturday school and their, their credit is kind of hanging on there. They're going to get it as long as they serve the time. And so I can't remember if I've mentioned this in a board meeting or not, but if they don't serve the time their freshman year, it rolls over to their sophomore year. It ends up going on to their account, much like a Chromebook fee would be on their account. So they have to make up time for not being in class and then they get the credit. When some of ours have just missed the opportunity to get the credit and kids get disheartened and they drop out.
Because they missed eight days.
Over eight days in a semester. They're at jeopardy of losing credit. We are revamping that for next year, so.
So they're giving credit just for setting through a, a clap or setting through some time?
No, this would be, this would be a kid who maybe they've missed ten days of school. They earned to be in the class.
Exactly.
And, but they missed ten days. Well, they make them make up time for the, the two missed days and then get the credit. When our process, they have to fill out an appeal form, it goes to a committee and then.
To be clear, we don't recover any of that attendance percentage though, when they're gone.
But it's an accountability metric.
And the end goal is to help the kids, get them to graduate.
Right. And I think there is a learning lesson there that, um, you can't just miss time from work and expect to keep your job. So.
And that policy's fairly recent in the district too. About five years ago, I would say, probably.
But with the job, there is FMA now. So if you have valid.
Right, for medical reasons.
You could break a leg in the safe days of school.
It, it would be interesting to see, um, the graduation rate before this implemented and actually, to see if there was.
It was higher.
It's way higher.
It's higher now.
No, it's way higher than before.
We've heard lots of feedback from staff, from parents, that this attendance policy has hurt us. Which is why we are revamping it for next year.
And it's kind of like she said, once we get the eight days to go, that's the point.
Yep.
Yeah, I know, but I can understand that.
Eight becomes eighteen pretty quickly.
And then we lose them.
Yeah.
And eighteen becomes eighty even quicker.
We're going to try something different. Try the Saturday.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on to the second portion of the, of the report and that is the continuous improvement report, uh, portion. And so that's just on the backside of your report. I think they're, let me sign it, if, um, if you're following along in that one. And, uh, so as I mentioned, um, the continuous improvements, uh, plan uh, that the board approved in, uh, November was submitted in December. And so again, we got thirty out of thirty on that. The response to standards, uh, which is another portion of the continuous improvement, and it had to do with all those six strands that I mentioned earlier. Um, that was submitted also in December and, uh, that will not be available until twenty twenty-four, it would appear as according to this report. So that will be scored sometime down the road. Um, then the climate and culture surveys, uh, the district received four out of four on that. We give the Student Gallup poll and we also give the Q twelve, uh, Gallup Employee Engagement Survey as well. And again, we've covered those metrics in the M six six, uh, committee meetings and then in the follow-up, uh, updates to the board. And the additional pieces under the success-ready students. Um, so success-ready students lives on the performance side, if you just, if you notice that, but it also lives on the continuous improvement side. And so for the success-ready students, uh, the KEA is a kindergarten, kindergarten readiness exam that was given, uh, the first time this year. And that is, um, as long as you get to a participation rate of, I believe, ninety-five percent, then you get the points. It's not based on how well you did. It, um, it, because, uh, school districts are just monitoring kids coming to them. And then the ICAP, that is the individual career and academic plan, uh, for students. And that is, uh, started, as we mentioned, it's just started in, in eighth grade. And so again, that is just ensuring that students are getting those done. And so that is, um, all school districts across the state are grateful that this is a dress rehearsal so that we can better, uh, improve and monitor that. And we are on pace to be, uh, full, getting all those points for the twenty twenty-three school year. Um, attendance, as you guys are always updated about attendance. Uh, we received zero out of four points for attendance. Uh, the district ended last year at seventy point five, uh, percent, seventy, uh, or seventy point six percent, excuse me. Um, and so we did not qualify for any attendance, uh, points. Uh, so real quick, I'm going to go to this slide right here. Uh, this is the point values that are associated with attendance. So we've got to get at least to eighty percent. And, uh, and since December, we have hovered at seventy-seven point three to seventy-seven point six. It, it is like, it is just the same, it's rinse and repeat every month. I've never seen attendance like this where it's immovable. It's just, it's stuck at seventy-seven point either three and then maybe it'll go to seventy-seven point six. So it is, it's not moving at all. Um, I've never seen this and I've been, I was there for Strive for Five and all kinds of other attendance approaches where we were actually able to move the needle. Um, and so we're not declining, but we're not improving either. And so again, it, it is definitely a conundrum, uh, uh, from a data perspective. The, um, the, uh, hope would be, and I know hope is not a strategy, and we're, but we're still working our plans and we're still working our, with our attendance interventionists and we're still working very hard because the finish line is coming. And so we would like to be, and our aim is, and our goal is, and our workout plan is to be at eighty percent. But, um, we're, we are, we've been hovering in the, in, in between a point three range for how many months? So I, I don't know what to make of that. I, my friend Crystal Ball is not telling me anything.
Is our attendance problem across the board or is it primarily high school, middle school or elementary school?
It is across the board, it is across the board right now. Typically, it's going to be more difficult at the secondary levels. Um, when, when, in twenty seventeen, when Strive for Five was underway, uh, our high schools were at sixty percent. So they, they were in a worse boat than they are now. But, um, but we were able to move them closer and, and for example, Central ended up at ninety. Benton and Lafayette were not far behind. Uh, but that was a big jump. So that's kind of what I'm getting at. Like I'm not, we're not seeing the same type of, uh, inter, the, the intervention to create a change in attendance behavior. The attendance behavior of both our, you know, our students and, 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 and our families, caregivers is, seems to be pretty stuck right now.
But we're considerably higher than last year.
Yeah, we're considerably higher than last year. But we're not moving, um, at the rate that we've seen in the past, if that makes sense.
That is our lowest area secondary then right now.
Mm-hmm.
Kindergarten is also very low.
Kindergarten is always low.
K and seven, K and seven was the worst last month, I think.
Yeah. And typically, and Dr. Edgar makes a great point, typically your, your K and your twelve are your worst. And that's congruent across the nation. But during the pandemic, it was the middle grades that spiked. Um, and so we're still, we're still seeing some of that. But then that's now, in some months, it's transferring to like your tenth graders and your ninth graders. So we're continuing to work on it. Um, and so we've taken lots of steps, um, and are going to continue to take those steps. So the future is bright. Um, but it needs to get real bright, uh, here before the end of May.
Part of that that I think is crucial is support from prosecuting attorney's office and the juvenile office. I think that's key. Because if parents are not, especially elementary, even middle school, if they have a kid missing eighty, ninety days of school, that's a parent issue. Those kids aren't driving. So we have been working with the county commissioners, Linda Meyer and Michelle Davidson for some action steps next year.
I don't see a comparison to other districts on this metric.
On the attendance? Yeah, I can get that to you guys.
Are they putting it the same way we are?
Yes, they are. It's, I mean, it's not just us, um, which, you know, misery loves company. But it is not just us, so I can get that to you. Um, I, and a quick review of just looking at the reports. It was, I was hard pressed to find any district that got all four points.
Well, it's part of the reason that the state is allowing us to go back to pre-pandemic numbers for, for formula for funding. Because this is a consistent issue across the state that, that their attendance numbers are down post-pandemic or through the pandemic. So again, we're, we're making some good progress back, but.
Yeah, and, 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 and again, like Dr. Seager says, I mean, we were at seventy point five, you know, at the end of May last year. The hope to be ten percent better in one year is a pretty, is a pretty good gain. And if, by anyone that sets organizational goals, that's a pretty good gain in a year, uh, coming out of, of a pandemic. So we're, we're getting there. Um, and then, uh, CTE expansion, um, we are, that has to do with, uh, Hilliard. And so we've worked with, uh, Jill Huntsman, uh, Dr. Gilpin and our data manag- management. We, uh, because of the expansion are, are likely to, very much to qualify for those particular points. And then the last section really has to do, on this page, has to do with, uh, required documentation. So that is things like the audit, the annual, uh, secretary of board report and timely submission of MOSIS and core data. So those are just things that are, are expected to be submitted on time. And so you get points for that. And then, uh, then lastly, they look at assessment participation rates and, and other considerations. Uh, so we, we're able to meet the requirements, uh, in terms of our students are, we're getting our students to test uh, at a high level, independent of the attendance. So we're managing to do that. Um, and, um, you can see the other questions that, that are there that they also put on this report. And then lastly, um, and this is something that we're not going to get deep into. I just put this slide on here, um, as an example. Um, our special programs department has done an outstanding job of, uh, developing their department's goals and how they monitor those goals. Um, and I think this framework, the way that they have set up this framework at the beginning of this year aimed at improvement, has allowed them also to be very nimble in, uh, having to really accommodate for some unexpected changes this year in terms of additional students that have come to them. That was certainly unexpected and how they've responded and been able to react to that in a nimble fashion. And so this is what our departments are doing with regard to supporting the APR is they're each developing a plan of everything that they're doing within their department, setting SMART goals, setting up a monitoring system and then working on a daily basis to continue to improve those things. So I just wanted to point that out. Um, and we, we will be going over this more in depth in, for example, in M six six committee meeting. But that, that is how the daily practice gets embedded into the report that you're looking at. Um, through the department lens, through, uh, the folks that are getting the work done.
I think that's so important because one of the things that I got from the report is our student group is broken down by, um, low-income, ESL, sped and minorities, I think? Okay. So that is half of the points that we're receiving. So for academic achievement, we receive six. For that student group, we receive three point zero. So if we focus on, you know, supplying those specific kids with more, I don't know, more, um, attention, more, um, a plan, like you said, that they were doing, I think that would improve a whole lot.
Well, and I will say, and I, I agree with your, with what you're saying, but I just wanted to point out that always check the point possible box because they don't give you as many points for the student groups.
And they score quite high, one point five out of two.
And I don't know why that, that is, I'm sure there's a reasoning. But for all your kids, and all your kids is those kids too. But then they just pull out that subsection so they don't, so you get twelve points for all your kids. You get a shot at six points for just that group. So just to point that out, um, cause the ratio ends up being the same. Um, you know, but, but yes, I think that's, um, I think that's, does that, does that clarify it? Okay, good.
But we could.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
At the risk of sounding philosophical, you said, I know hope isn't a strategy. But if you remember two months ago in a meeting, we saw that only thirty-four percent of our students felt hopeful.
Yeah.
That concerned me and, and I thought for myself, would I even get out of bed? You know, if I felt hopeless? And I was excited that Desi is addressing that. And I think it's something that we should consider. I think it has an impact on it, I really do.
I would agree. I would agree. I don't have a, a straight line correlation to it, but I would agree that it has an impact.
So does the AOI and the M six six ever kind of come together?
Yes, yeah. And so, so like if we, we look at our access and opportunity index, that is a big component of continuous, the continuous improvement report. And so that, that is where it sits in, in the framework of this report and it's in the response to standards. And it should also be observed in your continuous improvement plan. And so that was the access and opportunity index is just a way for us to finally have like a, a monitoring, um, kind of like a scale or a thermometer, a way for us to better understand what that looks like across the district. understand what that looks like across the district. So, how does that get, how does that find its way into this report? Because it's going to find its way into department plans, and it's going to find its way into building plans. And then, it's going to find its way into action steps, and into how we monitor those action steps. So, it gets embedded in the daily practice.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Going once.
Well, I'd just like to comment that I just love the work that you do, and the way that you simplify the workload of stuff that you actually have to do, and make it so simple, and explain it to us, and it's just been awesome. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I agree. Item two on the agenda, restructure of board committees, Dr. Edgar.
I actually think what Talia asked for.
Did you want to start? I mean, I did ask.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I've been talking to Dr. Edgar about the committees, and I just had a couple of ideas to throw out over to the board, just to, it will be lots of change in a couple of weeks, adding on other members and everything like that. And there's been a lot of, I guess, confusion about the committees and the community, like, I mean, a lot of people assume Gabe is over the board committees, and they're not Gabe's committees. It's our committees, and we need to do a better job at being over those meetings, being in charge of the meetings, being, I guess, the leaders of those meetings. And I just had a couple of ideas. Like, number one, a lot of times, I don't even know who's actually on the committees, how the people actually arrive, is there an application, are they appointed? I think that that needs clarified among us, board members, term limits. Are there any limits? I was looking at the policy BCE, and it speaks about time a member's asked to serve. I don't know anything about that. I'm thinking maybe like, a year's a good time, and then maybe another application process in order to be able to get more community engagement and involvement. Just because having the same eight or nine on the committee, year after year, there's no extra eyes or opinions on the committee. And that's not to claim that, like, after a year, you're not chosen again. I attend lots of committees, and there's two, three members, I think, would be like, really, really good at, like, keeping on the committees and everything like that. Okay, but that's also up to the committee chair. And then, I was also thinking, hold on, to finally change all of our committees to the structure approved under Vision Forward, like, a board member's in charge, and then community VP, staff member on the committees, and then the committees chosen by the person that's over that committee. We've been knowing about this for three months or so, and we've never made a move in order to actually implement the changes. And plus, add on the two new committees, the climate and culture, and the retention and recruitment of teachers. And then, also, I was, I was also thinking, the committee members also need, like, a code of ethics, or guidelines as well. Committee works closely with the board members, is my time up? Am I being timed? Committees work closely with the admin, board members, and everything like that. And we all have guidelines and rules and everything like that. I think that the committee members also need those as well. Those were my ideas. Are there any thoughts, anything like that?
I like the, that, some of that just has concerns with people of integrity, to just maintain that, even if something comes up and it's, it just rankles you.
Right.
Okay. We all get that. But, it's not, it cannot become an in-your-face kind of session at all. It's not intended for that. You can't accomplish what you want to accomplish if we allow our emotions to run us. I also like that, in those committees, that it has to be one where everybody has a voice, that we don't dominate, that as board members, yeah, we can lead it, but the point is to hear all the community members that are involved in it. And so, I, I like those ideas, too.
I agree with Kim on the, on the fact that, as leaders, like I noticed in our facilities committee early on, there were people in attendance that were far more qualified to be making decisions, and certainly giving us advice than we are as a board. And I think it's important that a board realizes their strengths and their weaknesses, and utilize those on those committees for their strengths. Don't ever let them feel like we're not using them, you know, for what they can bring to the table, because, my gosh, we would be fools to think that seven people are qualified in every aspect of those committees that we are over, you know?
I also think that the committees have to understand, the decisions are not created in the committees. It's only talked about and everything, and then given to the board in order to choose. And I've, I'm, it's been two, three times I've come across to where committee members are mad, the board chose another way. And I don't mean to come across rude or uncaring, you know, but it's our job in order to choose the committee members, it's just guidance in the choosing, I guess I should say.
It's just recommendations.
Right.
You know, one thing from administrative standpoint that I would say is that we, it doesn't make any difference, you know, what structure the board wants to follow, and we just need to know what our place is. It's because sometimes it's hard for us to tell, you know, are we supposed to be filling out the agendas? Are we supposed to be speaking at those things? That's all we need to know. But, we can provide you with whatever information you want, and whatever fashion you want, but that, we did, that's, we just need to know that.
I think it's always been a collaboration.
Yeah.
But, we just need to carefully define the details of that.
Yeah.
And, you know, Ms. Garcia or Mr. Reader, either one of you have anything to say about what this time?
I can tell you that the community members that were added to these committees, we did last year, put out a form, and basically, all we asked them was which committee they wanted to serve on, and what part of town they were from, because we were trying to pick people from all over the community, and truthfully, we didn't get a board.
Right.
Yeah, you probably filled some out, didn't you, Reba?
Yes, yes, I did, I submitted.
So, we pretty much took whoever signed up, because we didn't get, we didn't get very many people to.
Well, how would they, how was that publicized?
Eileen, do you remember?
Yeah, we posted the information to our website, we put it on social media, and I think the chamber helped us get the information out through their groups that, you know, separate group from us. So, you know, and we, if that's what we want to do, we can come up with some other creative ways to do that. I mean, we can buy advertising, I mean, there's lots of ways that you can do and get the word out. And really, you know, you guys know people that we don't necessarily know, so as board members, if you can share it with your different groups that you know, that would be very helpful to us, so.
And then, I also think a good pool of individuals are the board candidates, and the members of the committees of Vision Forward. I mean, everybody already, these individuals are already, what am I looking for, invested in the district.
We'd be happy to help you come up with the communications plan, and work plan, so. Let us know how you want to proceed.
I just, things are going really, really good. I just think that maybe tightening up a couple of areas, it could improve things even more.
And I do agree that a restructuring would be good, because we have two new board members. So, one of them might be interested in doing something.
They should be.
Restructuring at this point.
We got two new board members, two new committees, and now's a good time to talk about it. Personally, I'll throw it out there, I'd be okay with a one-year term, and maybe some sort of a code of ethics. I don't know what that looks like in detail yet, but...
I don't neither. I was just not able to go to bed one night, and I was like, here's these ideas, let me hand them over to y'all, and look at what you guys think about them.
But, David, I'm sure that there probably is some sort of code of ethics for committee members through Missouri School Boards Association, or Rachel and Duane, I can get something for you.
Cool.
Example, you know, and then you can tailor it to however you want. There we go.
Mr. Reader?
Obviously, I haven't seen or experienced any of these concerns in the committee meetings whatsoever. I don't see why we should be complicated with other things, and policies, and code of ethics and stuff. We've got enough work to do the way it is. So, I just haven't seen concern for this, because usually, we're begging people to serve on these committees. I have not turned down anyone who's come up to me and asked me to serve on any committee. We, my understanding, we can appoint anybody we want to. They don't have to be a certain number or anything. So, when you start making all these type of rules, more rules to jump through, such as term limits and code of ethics, you're going to even get less people to step up. The pay's not that good.
Well, that's one viewpoint. So, we can factor all this in and move forward in the future, make our way to our new board members come on board, and I'm sure they have something to say about it, too. Any other questions or comments?
David, I talked to Donna about this already, and this is just from a citizen volunteer point of view. Coming in to the committees, we don't know, I mean, we can't assume that we know, like, I didn't know any of the directors. And so, I, I recommend going forward to better retain your citizen volunteers, that we use, like, a tent card with your name if you're on the board, or if you're director of curriculum, or whatever, so that we know who to approach on different topics. I think that would be very helpful, to know who, you know, who's there, and who you go to for different things. I was trying to think, there was something else. Oh, so, we started out with three volunteers, I think, I'm the last man standing. But, some of that might be that, we use a lot of acronyms in every nonprofit, every industry. I, I've gone through a couple of different careers, and learning the language at the beginning is like, key. So, I just remember, and, and I worked ten years at Hilliard in the district, so I was familiar, very familiar with MSIP and APR, but not everyone has that experience. And so, we might be careful using our academic acronyms, so that they feel like they know what language is being spoken.
That's a good point.
I think it will help retain and recruit.
One of the things that I think, it's just my personal opinion, but if you have term limits of one year, you know, maybe, maybe that'd make it more, maybe convenient for someone to stick it out for twelve months. Because no one wants to do anything forever, so they may not want to stick it out longer than a year anyway, but...
Well, MSBA will tell you that, under your reorganization readings, that you should look at your committees as well as your offices. So, it's something that you should look at every year.
Any other suggestions, questions?
A lot were talking about it, there, we really kind of have a duplicate of committee in our standing committees, and that there's a finance, audit, insurance, and then there's an insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's probably just something that needs to be cleaned up and policyed, so...
Yeah, the policy needs to be looked at thoroughly.
I'll let the policy committee chair know.
There you go.
We are missing an MSIP six committee, and that's also...
Well, that was, that's an ad hoc.
It's an ad hoc, is it a standing?
Yeah, that was an ad hoc committee, that's one.
It's not listed there.
So, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Ms. Williams, Ms. Garcia, the board members.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay.